Yeah, so I say I'm excited to have my guests on all the time, but today I have the honour of having Brad Bradford, councillor of East York Beaches with us today. We talk about housing on this podcast in all different forms, but today we really get to hear from an expert who has boots on the ground and who fights for his constituents in his riding. And so I am just thrilled that you found time for us today to be on the podcast.
No, it's great to be here. Love the podcast. And honestly, any opportunity to talk to folks about housing, I think this is the most pressing issue facing the city of Toronto and municipalities across the country. And you're obviously on the tip of the spear of that conversation as well, so I'm looking forward to chatting.
Awesome. Great. Thank you so much. So I guess like, let's just like dive into it. I think there's a lot of people who don't actually know what a councillor is. I mean, and listen, I, I think that anybody who knows me knows I have a lot of political opinions that I don't share on the podcast, but I will admit that I wasn't very familiar with what a councillor did. So it would be great to hear from you. Like, what does a day in the life look for you? What are your roles and responsibilities? And yeah.
Well, I'll step back and sort of tell you how I got into it a little bit. My background's in urban planning. I used to work in private side consulting on transit projects across the country. I went down to Boston, Massachusetts, did some renewable energy work. And then I came back to the city of Toronto and I was in the chief planner's office. And that was my first exposure to local government. You know, I was raised by a single mom, three kids. We didn't have a lot of time for politics writ large, but we had dinner table conversations about politics because it mattered. But I would be like you and the vast majority of Torontonians, I didn't have a lot of exposure to local government. But when I saw it up close at City Hall, when I saw the bureaucracy, when I saw the council, when I saw some of the decisions and what the impacts were going to be on our city and Toronto's future, it gave me pause and sometimes it gave me concern. I think when you look into it, a lot of the issues that impact people's day to day lives, whether that is, you know, parks and rec, and I have two young daughters. So the, the sort of Hunger Games of trying to get my daughter into swimming lessons.
Oh my God, I remember those days.
Clearing snow from the sidewalks, when we talk about potholes, congestion, housing, transit, all of these issues are local government issues. And most people, when they think of politics, they focus on the big show in Ottawa. You think federally, maybe you think about the province. City council and your local councillor is often an afterthought. And yet, when you think about the issues that are going to make a big impact in your day to day life, it often, you know, you find yourself at City Hall. So those are the types of things, you know, that, that we're working on, or trying to work on at City Hall. And what I like about the job is so many people are out there trying to create an impact, trying to have a, make a positive difference in their community. I don't know if there's a better job out there other than local ward councillor to actually make a difference in the community where you're calling a place home, raising a family. And it's, it's been a huge opportunity. It's something I really enjoy, but no shortage of work to be done.
No, I'm sure. I guess you could almost, as you explain it, I think about like, from a sales perspective, you know, you have that beautiful job of being able to actually see people and talk to them one on one. Once you get into like the provincial and federal level, you know, you move into a role where you're set back and you have other people telling you what's going on, right? So I'm sure there's a lot of, there's, there's a lot of gratitude for all the work that you do, but also you actually hear it from people, like the real people that are your next door neighbors or walking down Danforth or, and we started talking before the, the episode was filming. Like I actually, I'm in East York every single week because it is one of those neighborhoods where you've got great school districts, you've got great greenery, you've got a great community. And you also still have, drumroll please, affordable housing, well, affordable housing for Toronto.
Housing that people can afford. And, and I think that is a really important distinction there. And we'll talk about housing policies and affordable housing policies and supply oriented solutions, which is where I generally go. But our story was like a lot of, a lot of families, I jokingly call Beaches, East York, the family belt. Because it's been such a place for people to sort of migrate and concentrate across the entire city where they're trying to raise a family because there are opportunities, you know, in the housing market to, to get yourself in on that ladder and put down some roots and build something. And again, you talked about all the amenities out in the East End. It's, it's been overlooked, I think, for many years. And that's why we've adopted this mantra in my office of believe in the East, that challenger mentality, that there's a lot of good stuff going on. And I was partial to the West End, I can tell you that, when we first started looking at places in 2015.
So funny, like Etobicoke or even like New Toronto or.
I grew up in Hamilton, so don't hold that against me, but I was sort of partial to the, the west side of the city there. And my buddy, you know, it's funny, many of the folks in the city planning department actually live in the East End, that main and Danforth sort of corridor.
That's interesting.
Yeah. And I think it's part of the affordability.
You heard that here first.
I think it's part of the access to transit, you know, you've got, you've got this really big concentration of Danforth Go Line, the terminus of the Gerard Streetcar and the main subway line on Main Station online too. So, so people have been gravitating to that, but my buddy said, yeah, check out the West End. And then when you're ready to buy, come to the East End. And, and I still remember the moment when my wife and I surfaced at Woodbine Station on a Thursday night in the fall and the sun was setting down Danforth as we cast our gaze to the west. And we walked out and found this place called Eastland Park. And the Danforth East Community Association runs a market on Thursday evenings. And there's music and there's families and there's all this good stuff. And we said, you know what? This is the spot. This is where we want to be. Turned off all the other listings all over the city. And then, like a lot of people, it was a months long journey and many bidding wars and frustration.
Good times, yes.
But eventually got in there and, you know, it's, it's been home for nearly the, the past 10 years. It's been amazing.
Nice. I won't, I won't trash the West End because there's great pockets in the West End as well. But it's very interesting to see people who are in the West End will never go to the East End. And East End people are very, very loyal and would not, never switch. It's a very different vibe, but it's very interesting that a lot of city councillors live there. It speaks to accessibility to downtown, the transit for sure.
Yeah. And I think back on that affordability piece and, and you look at parts of East York, you've got this, these sort of historic CMHC post-war neighborhoods, like Topham Park is a really interesting example. It's one of only two CMHC sort of post-war neighborhoods that has a very unique design. The other one is out in Kitchener, but these, you know, where you can still get a single detached bungalow in proximity to transit, nice deep lots, 130, 140, 150 feet lots deep. And it's something that you can build on. And it's still, again, relatively affordable in the Toronto context, accepting that affordability has kind of gone out the window. But there, there are options that people can afford there. And I think it'll continue to be a place where a lot of people want to put down roots and raise a family.
So let's touch on that, like affordability, talk about the housing crisis. You know, I'm sure you have so much to say about it as I do, but we are in agreement that we have a housing crisis. And, you know, my feeling is that Toronto is coming into its own. That's a reality. I think that we live in Canada and people are polite and they're fair and they want all good things for everybody. And I get that. But I think that when we look around the world and look at major cities like Paris and London, New York, and I've said in another podcast, the reality is, is that most places cannot be, places to put down roots, right? You're not getting out and, you know, having this idyllic sunset and saying, I'm going to buy a house for under, you know, I mean, even under 1.5 million. You know, not to deviate, but I remember when I got into this business 15 years ago, the luxury market was anything over $2 million. And you know, as well as I do, that in a good school district for four bedrooms in the city of Toronto in the core, there is nothing to buy under $2 million, which is, it's sad, it's frustrating. So knowing that we're in this situation where it's getting more expensive for Torontonians, where, like, how did we get here? Do you feel like it is, I mean, I feel like if you ask most people, it's realtor's fault. It's all our fault. We've driven the prices up, you know? But I mean, I would also say our city's grown. I mean, we have a, we have a championship basketball team. You know, we've got the Leafs, we've got a transit system that could be better, you know?
It's getting better.
It's getting better. Yes, yes. But, um, you know, what, what are some of like solutions that you think could happen? Or?
Well, all those things that you teed up around Toronto are true. You know, for decades, we have been a centre for migration and immigration and investment and talent. And there's a lot of great things about Toronto that, that result in that. You know, we've got great healthcare, we've got great schools, we're very diverse and inclusive city for the most part. And so that attracts international capital and talent. And that's a positive thing. We need to have a growth mentality in this city. I think we've kind of gotten away from that a little bit. But the, the story of housing here for me really starts, we go back to amalgamation. And I don't want to put the, the listeners to sleep, but the original official.
There's a word I haven't heard in so long. Oh my gosh, we're dating ourselves.
But the original official plan in 2003 really set the framework for how we were going to grow for the subsequent 20 years.
Right.
And now there's this reckoning. It basically said at the time, you know, look, we're going to keep the historic neighborhoods pre-amalgamation off limits. We're going to direct growth to our avenues and our urban centres. And the result of that has been, nothing's really materialized on the avenues because we've put in all of these urban design guidelines that make it financially prohibitive to build the type of housing that we want mid-rise.
We're going to talk about that.
And then we have really a concentration of very tall towers on our centres because that's where we've directed the growth. And, and then you have ground oriented, single detached houses in the neighborhoods that have been effectively off limits to any type of gentle density, walk-up apartments, laneway suites, garden suites. And so all of that is changing, but there was a real freezing out of that for, for nearly 20 years. And now we're having a reckoning. And I say this to urban planners all the time, that the dogmatic views that have sort of governed planning policy in the city over the past number of decades have really been detrimental to our housing supply, to housing options, to creating more options for more people in more neighborhoods. And when I was the chair of planning and housing, over the past two years, I was very focused on process improvements so we can get to housing outcomes faster, get shovels in the ground. And also unlocking more neighborhoods for the type of gentle density that when you spend time in a city like Boston or New York or Montreal, those walk-up apartments, those brownstones, those, you know, three story apartment buildings, those largely don't exist in Toronto.
They don't.
And yet, all of us would say, it would be nice to have those options. And so we're peeling back all of those levels of restrictions and regulations and what has been called exclusionary zoning. We're rolling that back. And it's all about, in my view, setting the table so that we can introduce different types of supply in neighborhoods that have been off limits for the past 20 years. So if there are more housing options for families, for entrepreneurs, for new Canadians, for people who want to build a life here in Toronto, right now, that stuff doesn't exist. And as a result, it's been really problematic.
And so, so I'm obsessed with laneway suites, so much so that I convinced Breakfast Television to have me on to talk about it. I, I think that it is such a genius way of, listen, it, I think it's the way of the footprint and future of Toronto is being able to have multi-units on these, these lots. So, and which is, you know, coming for me where I live in a neighborhood that doesn't have that. And I know that there are a lot of neighborhoods who would have like, be up in arms to find out that they're, you know, their neighbor was putting in a garden suite or whatever. But we don't have enough ability in this city to have these creative ways. So you've got all these laneways in Toronto. I mean, if you just go through East York, Lord, you know, even on the West End or whatever that is, but people are still not building them, which I find really interesting. And I'm curious to know why you think, I mean, garden suites are a little bit, little bit more challenging. I think the reality is you don't necessarily want someone living in your backyard. You'd have to have a massive lot. I think they're more, I'm hearing the prevalence in like, let's say in Etobicoke, where they have really deep wide lots, it's, it's catching on a little bit more, but.
These are good questions that frankly policymakers should be asking. And we don't. So, you know, I'll use mid-rise as the example. We, you know, had big aspirations to be the mid-rise city. You look at your.
So just sorry to interrupt you, just to, for everybody listening, mid-rise would be?
I think mid-rise is higher than what the city thinks mid-rise is, but let's call it six to eight stories on avenues.
Which is by the way, not allowed.
Well, we're, we're changing that, but, but I think the takeaway on that is we have made it so difficult and so restrictive and basically required people to go through the same litany of studies, win tests, ingress, egress, garbage loading, amenity space, parkland dedication. That, you know, when you amortize that over a small mid-rise project, six stories, it becomes cost prohibitive. So you don't build the six story building, you build the 60 story building because it's, it's harder to build six stories than it's 60. And so that's why, like, it's actually very easy to point to the different policies and bylaws that we have in our city and understand why we have the outcomes that we do. There, there are many reasons why nobody builds mid-rise and that's because we've made it so difficult to do that. And the same thing around laneway suites and garden suites. We still have to find a way to make it easier, more as of right. So that if, if a homeowner wanted to pursue that because they wanted, you know, maybe my in-laws or somebody to, to move in to downsize to free up their unit and their, their house in North York for a family, but still want to be in the city, maybe they want to help with childcare, that might be aspirational, Heather and Gary. But, you know, that, that's got to be an option. But I can tell you, I made specific changes in Beaches, East York in my community to make it more permissive to do garden suites because we've got lots that are all the same along Blor Danforth line. They're short, shallow lots. That's how the land was demarcated. You go back to the Grand Trunk Railroad. That's how all that stuff was, was divvied up. And the policy that came out effectively didn't work in Beaches, East York or Toronto Danforth. Because the setback requirement from the principal residence was such that it would never fit on the lots. And nobody is going to spend half a million dollars for $500,000 to build effectively a garage, one story. So you need that second story to make it worthwhile. And so I made some changes just in my community in Beaches, East York that would allow that second story at a, at a tighter separation between the principal residents. And what happened?
More than 40 feet.
What, what happened was we had more applications than anywhere else in the city. And so that's just the sort of like, you know, if you talk to people who build, if you actually take the time to go through the bylaw, read it, and it's not always easy to figure out, but spend that time as a policymaker, you can generally make sure that we have a policy in place that will lead to the outcomes that you want. I think there's just such a disconnect between governments at all levels and the people who actually build the housing, the experts, the folks who have the experience.
Right.
Such a disconnect. And then we all sit around shocked that.
It's not happening.
We don't have the outcomes that were intended.
So going back to the laneway suites, as you say that, so I have a client who engaged me about laneway suites. And he said, listen, owns multiple high, like apartment buildings across the city, investment properties. And he said, I'm interested in keeping an eye out in homes that I can buy. And then I would build, you know, a laneway suite. So then now I have like three units, four units is what he wanted to do on the, and it would make sense for him. And I said, you can't have two units on a laneway suite. So it, it's an interesting conversation to have because I think the general public, and we'll get into this as well, hopefully you can shed some light, although it's provincial and federal, is, you know, the general public sees, you know, an election and everyone's on their soapbox. And they're like, we're, you elect us, we're going to, we're going to build housing for you. We're going to, no, you're not. You're not. You say you will, but it's not like, it's not that you weren't doing it before. It's because of all those things that you were saying, it's not so easy. So you're going to build housing. Okay. So now you're spending government money, you're leasing land back. By the way, what developer is leasing land from the government? Why? Why? In what world does that make sense to them on a bottom line standpoint? They're not like, they're not, and we had a gentleman on from Graybrook the other day who was talking about, well, so the government gets involved with even, you talk about, so, okay, now we're not going to do the six or eight, we're going to do the 60. And, okay, great, but builders aren't making any money on anything outside of the 400, 500 square foot units. So they're doing, so then the government comes along and goes, okay, you have to have this many two bedrooms. But then they're not qualifying how big the units are. So you go look at a condo that's 700 square feet with two bedrooms and tell me you're raising a family in that. And so, you know, my frustration is when I hear these people get on their soapbox and I'm not making this political conservative liberal NDP, I don't care who it is, none of them can do it, is saying that they're going to come out and they're going to do for the people, they're going to build these. If we have to get rid of, you know, those basic red tape issues, like you were just talking about, that make it easier for builders and investors and developers to want to do it.
Well, we say.
And that's my rant, sorry.
No, and you're paying on. And there's just so many examples that you could point to. But we recently introduced multiplex permissions for units on a lot, which is a really fantastic direction to go in. And you've seen in historic neighborhoods, whether it's the annex or in fact actually parts of the beaches, these things have existed for a hundred years and they are a great, great housing option and provide rental units for people in neighborhoods that are very desirable, great thing. And yet they've been outlawed for decades here in the city of Toronto. We have now rolled that back, but imagine if you wanted to do a multiplex, four units and a laneway suite. Well, that wouldn't be possible because we have a development charge regime that exempts the first four units. But as soon as you add a fifth unit, now you have to pay full fare on all five units. And that is cost prohibitive for a project at that scale. It is a misalignment of our financial policy and the development charge regime with the housing outcome that we all beat our chests about and say that we want to see. And so.
And then it's not done because of things like that.
And so then nothing happens. And that's actually like so counterintuitive to how we're going to fix the housing crisis, the affordability challenge, the supply issues. We need to work through those.
It's like a wheel.
We need to work through those issues. And yet, you know, I try and move a motion about that at council. And a number of my colleagues are very offside with that. And I'm like, this is just a practical and pragmatic response to the, the bureaucratic red tape that is holding these projects back from a financial viability perspective. And we all know, just like every industry, if it's not financially viable, you're not going to do it. And I really resent the stigmatization of folks who are in the building sector, the development sector, the people who literally build the housing that we desperately need, also not recognizing the fact that like, if a project is not profitable, a bank, a bank's not going to finance it. So like, you need these projects to be viable if we want to have the trades on site. If we want to see the units constructive, if we want the projects financed, like, they have to be viable. And the best way we can make housing more affordable is to expedite the timeline so that you're not spending three years trying to go through an approval process. So that means more as of right permissions. And we also need to look at the fees because nobody makes more money off of housing than government.
On all three levels. Like, how inefficient is it that when all three levels are taking a piece of the pie and it's still not getting done? I mean, it really, and that, I just want to point that out also. It's a great point. The demonization of the developers and the builders that we need on side, do it for a living. They're doing it to pay their bills. They're doing it as a profitable business. It's not, this is not like a pro bono company. So the demonizing, and I get there are renters out there, they're feeling it. I mean, we won't even get into the rental market right now, which by the way, is a perfect time to go rent something because there are so many condos out there to go because people can't afford to keep on them anymore. But I, I mean, it really, here's a question for you. I would say, would you lump the whole major streets initiative into the same thing as well? That the fact that they've opened up the major streets, certain major streets, to be able to develop multi-level to be the same issue and why people aren't doing it?
It's a good example. You know, that was another thing where staff brought forward a proposal that effectively was dead on arrival. Didn't work. And, and very frustrating for me, like I championed the major streets and bringing that forward. And our own financial analysis demonstrated to us that with a 30 unit cap, which is what they started with in Scarborough, 30 unit cap on a six story major street project, the project is not viable. And so I said in committee, I was like, I'm so sick and tired of having policy come in front of us that's dead on arrival, that doesn't work. We have to stop doing things that doesn't work, that we, that we are well aware of is ineffective. And I was able between committee and council to bump that up to 60 units. The reason 60 units is the threshold is because that's where you get into type G loading requirements for, for garbage and waste.
Right, right.
Technical stuff, but it's, it's again, it's, we need to stop doing things and pursuing policies that don't effectively work in practice, as aspirational as they might be. And, you know, you were talking about the public builder thing. Again, campaign rhetoric and it's, it's parties across the board and all, all three levels of government. But we have an administration, a mayor here in the city of Toronto who is absolutely committed to this notion of public builder. And we've seen that movie before, you know, in, in the eighties and nineties and the largest cost overruns, you know, on infrastructure projects that, that you'd seen in the province in a long time. And it ended up being scrapped. The, the outfall of that is the Toronto community housing portfolio, which is a depreciating asset with escalating costs. But the idea, and I think most people understand this fundamentally, the idea that government is going to do something faster and for less money than the private sector is ludicrous. You can't point to anything where that is the case. And, you know, we are never going to be able to hire the experts and the people with the experience because the private sector is not going to allow us to. We cannot pay them enough. So that means people are learning on taxpayer time and, and money. And effectively, we're trying to fit a square peg in a round pole with this public builder model. And we, if we create any housing, it will be the most expensive affordable housing in the country's history. And so it's all about partnerships with market builders, with not-for-profit builders, leveraging the experience and the expertise that is out there, working together to unlock housing outcomes. But the idea that we're going to do it is, is obviously pie in the sky and will be.
It's rhetoric.
It will be extremely expensive and very unproductive.
And I'm not going to get political, but our mayor is too busy trying to make sure that our libraries are open seven days a week. Forget about, let's forget about housing. Let's, let's just be really focused on the Toronto libraries. Anyway, so please go Olivia Chow. Anyway, so, um, let's go on to another controversial topic, which is traffic. Bike lanes are a big headline. So, uh, I don't, was it Olivia Chow that did the bike lanes? Was it her initiative? I don't remember what it was, but she loved the bike lanes. Anyway, so we've got all these bike lanes and then the provincial government came in and said, we're going to remove them for millions of dollars. Do you think that removing them will help the traffic in the city? Do we think, I mean, I never understood bike lanes in a city that has snow on the ground for seven months of the year. So that's a whole other logical conversation. I mean, Vancouver makes sense, LA makes sense, but Toronto, no.
So a couple of things on that. Congestion is a crisis in the city too.
It's a crisis.
You know, we, we still have.
Everywhere, downtown.
Some of the slowest return to office rates in North America. We're still only at 71% Tuesday to Thursday here as of October 2024.
Oh, is that true? Like, oh, interesting.
But that legs behind other peer markets, both across the country and certainly in the UX context where they're all over 85%. So the only.
And we still can't get anywhere in our city.
Yeah. And, and so we're only behind Ottawa, which obviously, you know, a city with a lot of federal civil servants who, as part of collective bargaining, made not going back to work sort of the central argument for them. So like that's.
Taxpayers money at its best.
It's a challenge in Toronto and the lack of coordination on construction projects, development, bike lanes and, and really the road closures that are simultaneously happening has ground the city to a halt. You cannot tie up Lake Shore and King Street and Queen Street and Richmond and Adelaide all at the same time and not give commuters any outlet or opportunity to navigate east-west. Then you exasperate that by also shutting down Spadina to replace streetcar tracks at the same time that you're doing York, Simcoe and University. So the entire core was ground to a halt. You couple that with.
401? Let's talk about the 401.
The 401, you know, leave that to the province, but the Gardiner, which is a project that we're leading. You know, I had to basically campaign for months to try and get the mayor to move on 24/7 construction. And that should have been signed last fall when we were doing the construction agreement.
Oh no, but they closed that down for Taylor Swift. There was the convoy. So like, that was really important. I just, you know, I understand that that had to stop everything. Sorry to interrupt.
I hear your frustration and I get chastised for saying that, you know, congestion is a quality of life issue. But it is a quality of life issue. It makes it harder to get into the office, harder to get to the job site, harder to get home to your family at the end of the day. And again, like, you know, I've been mocked for, for, you know, acknowledging that there are people out there that, you know, they're working multiple jobs and transit is not going to be a practical option. My wife's in construction. She goes around from job site to job site. We've got two small kids. We're not putting them on a bike.
No, you're not.
And, and so I think we just have to recognize as a city of 3 million people, metropolitan area, we need to make sure that there are ways for people to move, whether that is in a vehicle or on transit or on bikes. And the challenge with bike lanes is some of them work really well and some of them don't. I'm a year-round cyclist, so I'm one of those guys that'll pretty much ride all year round. Not in a Blizzard, but with the bike share, you know, and because of where I am at Danforth and Woodbine, I'm able to get in and out of downtown and it's the best way to go, not because I'm an ideologue, because transit is so unreliable and the traffic is so terrible. And so I know that from my house, I can pretty much be 25 to 30 minutes downtown to City Hall. And it's predictable and I'm able to do it.
Well, and it's also, listen, it's healthy. And I'm a runner, so I appreciate the ability to be out there 24/7, but at what cost?
But not everybody is. And, and so I would, I would just say that there are bike lanes in the city that work really well and there are ones that do not. And as elected officials, when something's not working, we ought to have the humility to stand up and say, yeah, this isn't working, we're going to change course. And I think Blor West out in the far reaches of Etobicoke is the best example. I have driven out on Blor West, I have taken transit there and I've ridden a bike there. And that bike lane, you know, it's not particularly safe. It has contributed to incredible congestion, interference with emergency services. And I know folks in the neighborhood who have now added an extra 20, 25 minutes to their commute because they're sitting there at intersections for multiple lights because they can't get through.
By High Park?
Further than that. Like you go out to Royal York, like the, the, almost, almost Mississauga. Like that is a real problem. And rather than listening to the small business community or the folks who listen to the neighborhood, you know, you've got a council and an administration that effectively just gaslights everybody and says, no, this isn't a problem. The data says it's not a problem. Or you're the problem because you're not riding a bike. And I just like, as someone who recognizes that bike lanes are going to be a part of any major metropolitan city, I also recognize that we have to do them in the right way. And when we compromise. And when we compromise the public's trust, when we try and tell them something's working when clearly it's not, that makes it so much more difficult to do the next bike lane because people don't trust you, they don't believe you. And I think the cycling community, their biggest mistake is when you go out there and you try and defend the indefensible, you're so offside with the vast majority of Torontonians who I think would say there is a role for bike lanes, but they can't be everywhere and on every street. You need to be thoughtful about how you do it, and the focus needs to be safe and sensible. We've lost the plot on that. The provincial government, I would say it is certainly provincial overreach, but they are stepping in because council, despite having all the tools at their disposal, the thing we are lacking is leadership. And there's no leadership to stand up and do the right thing on this.
No, there is not.
And, you know, there was an opportunity to remove them in June, the mayor voted against that to not remove it. You know, there has been, the premier has been indicating for for weeks now that he's going to do that. They've had zero dialogue, according to the mayor on this front. So she's not actually working towards a solution. But my view would just be when it's not working, make a commitment to people to fix it, take them out right now, chart a different course because there is a need for cycling infrastructure, it just can't be on every major arterial in every instance, and we need to be thoughtful about it. And when we're not, we lose the trust of Torontonians and it becomes a really divisive discussion.
I appreciate that. You can decline to answer this question if you want, but am I crazy to think that our mayor just doesn't want cars downtown? That she's doing everything she possibly can to just avoid people driving downtown and being on the subway or, you know, riding their bikes? Like, there's almost this like, okay, like, what are you trying to tell us? Because you're making it so hard.
This is the challenge, and I would say this applies to a number of individuals on council, but it's when it's about ideology over ideas, when when it's about beliefs rather than evidence and practicality. And so like, you know, there is always going to need to be vehicles in the core. And Toronto, like, like different jurisdictions, we took 30 years off of building real transit. And so what you can't do is tell people, oh, like, don't drive a car or the sort of.
But we won't build any subways.
Or the the arguments that I think are unhelpful is when people stand up and beat their, beat their chests and say like, you know, you're, you are traffic, I'm sick and tired of being stuck in traffic, well, you are traffic. Ride a bike, take transit, that doesn't work for everybody.
But I have to carpool my children or like, I don't know how to ride a bike, I don't know.
And in 30 years from now, we might be living in a different world. But you can't, you can't suggest to people this this sort of ulterior, alternative Pollyanna universe where we have a robust transit network like New York or London, or we have a climate where it's quite comfortable to ride a bike all year round. Like, that is not the reality of what's on the ground today. And so I am seized with working in the context of where we are today, recognizing that there's a lot of challenges we're dealing with as a big city, 640 square kilometers, a lot of geography, and we haven't built out the transit. And, you know, cars, people and goods do have to move. You know, this was a mayor that literally campaigned on tearing down the Gardiner. Now, obviously, the province stepped in to make sure that that wasn't going to happen, but imagine that, that's, this is one of.
People voted for that.
This is one of, I think a lot of people didn't realize, but, you know, this is one of the busiest trucking quarters in North America. Rochester, Buffalo, Toronto, Montreal, those goods have to move. We have an active port on the waterfront. So take the Gardiner, which is already a mess, and collapse that down onto Lake Shore.
Put logic into words, you know, why, why, why logic?
So these are some of the, these are some of the frustrations.
Take down the major, we have no major artery going through the downtown, no, no, it's fine.
But I think, you know, it's incumbent on all of us as elected officials to get our heads out of the echo chamber of City Hall and spend time talking to real people in the community across the city about their hopes and aspirations, but also about their frustrations. And and I could tell you, like, you know, congestion, affordability, which is often housing, and safety. That is where Torontonians are at right now. And the amount of time that we spend talking about that at the council chamber, very, very little. Spend a lot more time talking about renaming Young and Dundas Square. We spend a lot more time talking about different social programs that we would like to run, frankly, on behalf of other levels of government. But I'm telling you, those are the issues and the priorities for everyday Torontonians, and and their voices are not necessarily to be heard in the council chamber. My job is to make sure that I'm listening to people and bringing forward solutions that respond to their concerns.
Thank you for that, Brad. I really appreciate it, and I wish there were more people on council that did that, that did not sit at their desk in City Hall and just listen, because a lot of people just like to listen to themselves. So I wanted to end with more of a fun note now that my blood pressure's through the roof because I just feel as passionate, not as passionate, let's say, as you, as I do not run for council and probably should never for so many reasons. But I like to ask a question at the end that kind of gets the viewers to know the guest. So you are stuck on a desert island, and you have one meal you have to choose that you get to eat for the rest of your life on that desert island. What is it? And it's not a like, and this might be a great one for you, being someone in East York and constituent out there, but like, for me, my favorite happy place is Balthazar's in New York, having an Eggs Benny. So if someone were to ask me, that would be what I would want to eat for the rest of my life. So you have a night to yourself, what is your favorite meal? Where are you going? What are you ordering in?
I'm up, you know, night to yourself is interesting. I'm a big breakfast guy, love breakfast, like a greasy diner. So I probably would be in that space. I also like the portability, I'm a guy on the go. So like a breakfast sandwich from like Lazy Daisy on Gerard.
Lazy Daisy, that's a good one.
That I could, I could have every day, I couldn't afford it, but like, if I could have that every day and I'd be quite content. I think it's a great way to start the day. You know, my girl's three and a half and one and a half, so we're up early, so we're in the sort of 5:00 AM hour and.
It gets easier.
Yeah, coffee, breakfast sandwich, that's a good way to go. I'd be a happy man if I could do that every day going forward.
Awesome, thank you so much for your time, I really appreciate it.
Nice to chat.
And yeah, if anybody, I don't know if you make yourself available or if anybody has any questions about East York beaches, we'll be, put your email or contact information in the show notes, and thank you for your time, I really appreciate it. I know you have to run.
No, happy to be here, thanks.
Pleasure, thank you.